Town Council will conduct a public hearing at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, October the 10th, 2012, in the council chambers town hall tonight at 7:40 on South Ledger Highway, Ledger, Connecticut, to receive comment on the components to town blight ordinance. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard, and written communications will be accepted. Copies of the draft ordinance are available in the town clerk's office during regular business hours dated at Ledger, Connecticut, this 27th day of September 2012, or the Ledger Town Council, and the CDA's chairman is published in the Monday day on October 1st, 2012.
At this time, I'd like to ask, Councilor, I would like to give us a brief presentation, and if you'd like to pass that correspondence back to me, that would be fine, unless you would like to address that.
Sure. Can you read it?
Oh, I can, why don't you give your presentation, and then I can read it into the record.
That's fine. We have spent 12 years-ish working on this blight ordinance, or actually, some people on this council have spent 12 years working on this ordinance, some of us have spent a year or so working on it. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna present this to you basically in generic terms. Let me tell you what this ordinance is not. This ordinance is not a way for you to complain about your neighbor's shrubs. This neig-, this ordinance is not a way for you to get your neighbor's house painted a different color. This ordinance is not a way for the town to come down on people and just effectively get into their knickers about picky, anti-stuff. This is an ordinance that allows the town another tool to deal with problem properties in the town. For instance, we have a number of foreclosed properties in the town that have not been maintained for, in some cases, years. They are now bank-owned, and the bank has done nothing to maintain those properties. This ordinance allows the town a tool to go to the, to the bank and say, "Hey, mow the lawn, trim the hedges, fix the place up a little bit because the neighbors are affected by it." It is also a tool which allows us with certain industrial or commercial properties that are not being maintained properly to go in and say, "Do something about it. Take care of, take care of the property, clean it up, whatever." Again, it's, it's not intended to be an ordinance where we create fights between neighbors and that sort of thing. I will note that as of the first of this month, thank you, Mary, for passing me this, Connecticut has passed House Bill Number 5319, which is titled "An Act Concerning Persons Agreed by Decisions of Municipal Land Use Boards and the Penalties for Violating Municipal Blight Ordinances." Basically, this is a law that the state passed that says if you, if you have a blight, a blight board, and they're coming down too hard, it gives recourse to the property owner. So there are a number of legal recourses to the property owner. We tried to make this blight ordinance as generic as possible, following the Connecticut State statutes, and we really, we worked very hard at trying to keep this from being, the words I've used, as an onerous ordinance. So, that's pretty much this ordinance. I mean, I could read all the details, but that won't help too much.
I would just like to have for the, read into the record, I'm not gonna read the whole letter, but basically, it was a letter from town clerk, Michael Curly, who suggested that in Section 6, Paragraph D, lines 3 and 4, it refers to the amount of fines would be paid to the town clerk, and his suggestion was that the payment of fines be made to the office which originates the action and currently possesses the existing subject matter. He likened it to the WCPCA, which handles all of the water sewer issues, including payments, so we may want to consider that in our discussion. At this time, I would hear any public comments. Yes, sir.
Mark Bancroft, Forsmith Pond Way, I have two comments. I have a letter from Mr. Pete Gardner at 72 Inch Cliff in Galesbury. I will not read it, but will present it to the secretary. He has concerns with the ordinance, and cites about 10 instances of where his concern is. So, I will read that. Unless you want me to read, I read the letter, it's rather short.
Why don't you go ahead and read it?
Okay. It's to the Ledger Town Council, from Peter Gardner, 72 Inch Cliff Drive, Galesbury, Connecticut. Comments I would like to have read into the record on the blight ordinance during tonight's public hearing. Under Section 2, "Why have including residential and commercial?" Section 3 CC, "What is a private street? Do we have any in town? Remove private street." Under definitions of debris, there is an H that does not belong. Blight enforcement officer, zoning enforcement officer, and building official, pick one or, or the other, but should not be both. Under definition of neighborhood, why is this included? It's a little confusing. Section 4, owner of the housing property, what does this mean? Please clarify it. Also, Section 4 says "the blight enforcement officer." Section 5 says "a blight or enforcement officer." Need consistency. These are not my comments, but Mr. Gardner's. Section 6, what comes first? Hearing or legal proceedings initiated by the blight enforcement officer? And Section 6D states that if a person who has sent notes pursuant to Section 3 of this section, I do not see a subsection 3. This is Section 3, which is the definitions, and he asks that he missed something, and the sign by Mr. Peter Gardner.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, his comments are mostly terminology.
Typos.
Process, typos.
Administrative.
Administrative, thank you.
Okay. Now I speak as myself, as a resident of Forsmith Pond Way. I reviewed the ordinance. I think the ordinance is something that we've all waited for. I think it's a very good ordinance. You've spent a lot of time on it. I would only ask that you spend maybe another month on it, go back to subcommittee with it, and let the subcommittee do a workshop with the working staff that has to administer this, so that we can address issues such as Mr. Curly pointed out, you know, that the town clerk, why have the town clerk, why not just the blight, you know, enforcement official? And then there's some other things. I don't believe that we should say that it's going to be the zoning enforcement official or the building official. It should be the person that is picked by the mayor to enforce it. So that way, you have, you know, the working people need to address this ordinance, and there needs to be a workshop on it, so that when you do finally pass the ordinance, you have an ordinance that is a workable, you know, a workable document that everybody knows what they need to do. I think passing it the way that it is currently written, if you pass it this evening, you're gonna have problems trying to administer it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Anyone other than Mike Cherry?
Good evening. Mike Cherry, 5 Woodwell Drive, also Chairman of the Planning Commission. And I guess I need to have a disclaimer that say, that says that Mark and I and Pete did not speak before this public hearing, but you're gonna hear a lot of the same things in the same order as I've highlighted in many others.
So you can skip those?
Well.
Thank you, Mr. Cherry.
Let's go back to Section 2, and once again, the parenthetical, the offset, including residential and commercial, is not necessary. No owner of real property fully defines it. You might wanna think on why would you want to exclude agricultural lands? Section 223B, the Connecticut General Statutes under agricultural lands is very broad. Once again, it's a blight enforcement officer and a committee that determines whether it's blight or not. A lot of what might be blight in a residential, one-acre neighborhood would not be blight on a 50-acre farm. So I think we leave some discretion there, just take that disclaimer out. I think if you took out private street, just like right away, it would satisfy Pete and Mark's comments, but that, that last sentence, just something's missing. The no value added comment, there's an H in debris. Recommendation for blight enforcement officer. When I looked at it, I said, you know, the zoning enforcement officer and the building official very often are very busy. We've, over the years, made a point that this is not a means to enforce zoning regulations or, or building codes. This is a means to attack blight. And I think you could fix that just by adding, blight enforcement officer shall mean the zoning enforcement officer, the building official, or other individual as designated by the mayor. And that solves the problem if they're busy and opens it up to where staff can figure out who the best person may be. Neighborhood, it took me a couple minutes to realize that if I had a property I was looking at for blight, and I'm looking at what's the neighborhood of that property this defines it. I didn't have a problem with it, but I highlighted it because it took me that couple minutes to figure out what it was trying to tell me. The "of" is extra. I had put in Section 6D, I changed it to subsection 4, just because it was a merit carried forward on a rewrite of an ordinance. And there's a problem in Paragraph E, since they pause and or fees in the second and the last line. I did look at the recent House bill, but whatever they pass will be added to the General Statute 7152 in the future, so I don't really see that as difficult. I'd like to congratulate everybody who worked on the blight ordinance for the last decade. I, I think there probably aren't a lot of places this will be applied, but it's nice to have the tool in the toolbox. As a means to go enforce things when nothing else will. So, thank you for your advice.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Derek Treister, 10 Huntington Way. I may duplicate a little bit what Mike said, because I did not hear everything that he said, and if I do that, feel free to interrupt.
It'll cut you off.
The blight ordinance are exceedingly difficult to write. There are constitutional issues, there are enforcement issues. It's, it's, I have critiqued other towns' blight ordinances, and it's, it's just really difficult. I'm curious, I'm just curious if an attorney has looked at this blight ordinance?
Gentlemen?
To my knowledge, we have not passed it by an attorney. However, I will state that most of this or, most of this ordinance points to Connecticut General Statute.
Okay. The, I, I, I just quickly read it. On the first page, under A, it, it, blighted premises, the definition, it is in a condition which poses a serious threat to the safety, health, and general welfare of the community, as determined by the Director of Health, the zoning enforcement officer, and so forth. Serious threat to safety, health, and general welfare of the community. Can, can, can you give me an example? And if you cannot give me an example, then that should be deleted from the ordinance.
Can I give you an example in town right now?
Yes, certainly. Yes, that's a serious threat to the safety, health, and general welfare of the community. If it's, if, if it was to the neighbors or to the resident, I would understand it, but the community is, is a global, my, my definition of, of community is the entire town, I think.
Yes, but that's your definition of community?
Right. Understand. But, but that, that's, that's one of my concerns. On the abandoned vacant building structure as defined in 117.1.1 of the, of the statute, of the 2009 Amendment to the 2005 State Building Code, that has become an illegal residence as documented by police, this could have nothing to do with blight. And we could have a very nice building that's well-maintained, everything is in good shape, no leaky grooves, no broken windows, no nothing, and if it has been, if somebody is squatting in that structure, that would make it a subject to this blight ordinance. Landlords do not always have the power to get a squatter out quickly. Just, just an observation. The...
I'm, I'm missing your point on that one.
That's not an abandoned or vacant building. If the landlord is trying to evict someone, that does not make it an abandoned or vacant building.
Well, it does if they're a squatter.
No, no, it doesn't. It's not an abandoned building. Now, if I were to use, let's say, for an example, the old, the old gas station under 117, Quonklin Road, and if somebody had was, had broken into that building, who's squatting living there, that could be appropriate.
Correct. But your definition of somebody trying to get, a landlord trying to evict potential, potential legal proceedings against a tenant does not make it an abandoned or vacant building.
The definition of abandoned vacant is defined in, in 117.1.1.
Correct.
For the ordinance. Abandoned, somebody squats in it after it's been abandoned, brings it into the scope of this ordinance.
Yep.
So, yeah, I, so I still, I guess I still don't understand.
The concern?
Yeah.
It, it's just that not all buildings that are abandoned are blight, in my opinion.
Gentlemen, what I would like is, let Mr. Treister make his comments, and then we can discuss at the regular meeting. I don't want it to turn into a debate.
Correct. You know, a lot of abandoned buildings, most abandoned buildings are not blighted. And even if it's an illegal residence, it may not be blighted. And the way this ordinance is proposed, my interpretation is that if it's abandoned and isn't illegal residence, by definition, it is blighted. Number D, multiple felony or misdemeanor arrests on the premises. Again, the landlord does not always have control on this, but more significantly, the, in my opinion, if this is the reason that it is considered to be blight, it's because of multiple, multiple felonies or misdemeanor arrests on the premises, then I don't think it's fair to our zoning officer and our, our building official or, or Director of Health to, to enforce this. I, I think it becomes more of a police matter, and I, I would, I would recommend that the ordinance be amended such that the police are, are the primary enforcers of the blight ordinance. Blight is not technically, in my opinion, a land use. It is a condition, it is, blight is a condition of the property that is on the land, but it is not a land use. It's, it's closer to being a building official issue when the building is dangerous. That, that's within the scope of the, the building official. But when there's arrest involved, and felonies and misdemeanor arrests, it, it's more of a, a, a law enforcement issue, in my opinion. Number F, the premises create substantial and unreasonable interference with the use and enjoyment of surrounding premises as reported by neighborhood complaints, fire, public safety, or health department reports. This is a, this is a legal issue. This is, normally, normally in law, the burden is on the complainant, and the presumption is of innocence. This entire ordinance is reversed. This entire ordinance presumes that the person is guilty of blight, and he has to prove his innocence. Constitutionally, this, in my opinion, I'm not an attorney, but constitutionally, I believe that this ordinance is backwards. You are assuming that he's guilty, and he has to prove his innocence. Under Section 4, enforcement by citation, the blight enforcement officer is empowered to issue citations for any violation of this ordinance. By leaving a copy of such a citation with the owner, that's, that's fine, that, we use the same thing in our zoning citation. The citations shall state the exact nature of the violation. The problem is the time allowed for corrective action, which is Section 4 B C, not to exceed 60 days. If the blight is caused by missing shingles, broken windows, torn screens, garbage piling up, missing garage doors, or garage doors at a 45-degree angle, just, just general lack of care, that cannot always, it, it may be difficult for a landlord to correct that in 60 days, especially if the property is occupied by a tenant who's causing all of these problems. I, I think the 60 days should be looked at, we need some wiggle room in those 60 days.
The only comment I have to make about that, Eric, is that 60 days comes from the state statute.
Understand, I'm just talking about the real world.
But, but that's the way, I'm just saying, from the state statute, that's the way it's worded.
Correct.
So that's why...
Is it worded that way, curious, is it worded that way for blight? Or is it worded for that way for 7152C for blight?
That's why it's in there in a parenthetical, for instance, because that came from the statute.
But keep in mind, too, that that 60 days is, within that 60 days, they can also go to the Blight Appeals Committee. The Blight Appeals Committee can give them more time. So they have 60 days to take action.
Are you talking, referring to, referring to the blight enforcement officer? Or, or the blight, the hearing officer?
I'm talking about the...
Blight hearing?
Board, the committee commission.
Appeals Committee.
The Appeals Committee.
Ah, the Appeals Commission, okay.
I'm gonna give you two more minutes, Mr. Treister. Make good use of it.
Under 7, under 7152C, the hearing, the hearing officer for citations, the authority is constrained to only if it is blight or not blight. That's, that's, they tend to be very limited in their authority. I agree that there should be a blight ordinance. I know it's a lot of work, I know the people put in a lot of work on this thing. Before it's adopted, as a minimum, I would recommend that it be reviewed by an attorney for its constitutional issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Gary Schneider. I live at 101 Inch Cliff Drive. I do support the statement of the Planning Committee Chair. It's always great to have another tool in the toolbox. I also support what Marcus said. If that tool remains in the toolbox, and it's not used, or the employees aren't trained on how to use it, it will become rusty. And then, once you take that tool off to try to use it, it doesn't work. There's too many missteps, there need, it just will not be a usable item, and we'll fall back to what we have done for the last 12 years, which is really nothing. So I recommend to the town council is that step back, maybe just for a little bit, and take a look on how this thing will interact with staff, if staffing is needed, if there's an appeals board that needs to be made up, so I would like the council to take, take a look at that, and make sure that the tool that was taken out of the box can be used.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Chris Thompson, 1981 Route 12. I'm not gonna cite a whole bunch of law and legal, I want to take a step back. First, thanks to the folks that have worked on this for so long. I want to take a step back, though, and say, if we didn't have it for so many years, why do we want to bring it in now? The problem with these, and I've come from a couple of different towns where we've had them, and contrary to Councilor Eric's portrayal of it, if you look at Section 2F, it is a tool for people to call and complain about their neighbors. Exactly what it says, will determine blight by the number of complaints. So it is a tool that does that, and any blight ordinance you're gonna write is going to do that. You can't get around that. That's human nature. So I'm, I'm asking you to think again, what are you trying to achieve? Does this ordinance achieve it, and does it bring anything of worth that's gonna override the negative things we know it's gonna bring? One example I want to tell you about happened, it was in the paper here locally, it happened down in East Haven. In East Haven, the building officer was having problems with someone on all the different rules and heights and setbacks and all of that stuff. Well, that someone got their daughter a bunny rabbit, and they put a bunny rabbit in a cage in a basket. They declared the property as blighted, because the blight ordinance has said no animals. So what that did is, is now they're, they've got all these problems because they're being sued by the homeowner, because a building official used a, tried to use a blight code to enforce a building decision, which I think other folks have addressed, having the building people do this. And it was just a huge embarrassment for the town, and they now have a lawsuit because it was a misuse of power. So I just want you to think, what problems are you gonna create, and is it worth creating them? Like we said, you said, we've done it a dozen years without it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Go ahead, you're gonna...
30 seconds.
30 seconds. I would really like to start at 7 o'clock, so...
A lot of the comments that were made about how difficult it is and where it goes is, they are contained in the state statute in the citation period, you read 7152C, the E F, it's all in there. The writer proclamor is in there, the, the extension of time is in there after you get to the hearing officer, so a lot of those concerns go away if you follow the procedure as you presented it. But it's not in the ordinance, it's in the ordinance references.
And in fact, it was Randy, when I was the chair of Land Use, and we discussed this, it was Randy, our building official, was the one that initially directed us to the statute to make sure we had that language in there. So he was certainly involved in the discussion as we went along here. Mayor?
Yeah, just, just to put a little bit of spin on it from, from the mayor's office. One of the most frustrating things in my job is people come into my office and ask these questions about properties in their area, and, and the condition of them, and what can we do about it. And it's a very frustrating thing, because we can't often help people, because there are many things, even with this blight ordinance, that are just not necessarily violations of our regulations. In defense of this, and, and I think I, I'm gonna take credit for claiming the term, you know, the tool, the toolbox, we have a zoning or, a zoning regulation, which I guarantee you has hundreds of violations in this town now. I don't hear anybody suggesting that I throw the zoning regulations out the window. What I like to subscribe to is the fact that we're not doing this to penalize people, we're not doing this to, like, fines. I, you know, this town, as far as I know, has never let me to fine against someone for a zoning violation that I know of, and I don't feel like going down that path, we don't have to. But I, I like the, the knocking on the door sometimes, you know, have our officials knock on someone's door and just say, "Hey, the situation you have here does in fact violate one of our regulations. We'd appreciate it if you could do something with it." You know, it's like, it's like sometimes a letter from the wire, and that's all it takes sometimes to do that. The process to report zoning violations, and now these blight violations, I will tell you right now, our staff is not set up to do that, because there are time periods that you have to adhere to, because the first time you threaten somebody, if you don't follow the rule, that's the end of your enforcement. So again, it is something that I think we can use, I think it would be helpful, especially with properties that are commercially, commercially owned due to foreclosure. I think we've seen responses even without this, when we have contacted institutions that own them. And, but I'd like to just, I think it would be useful tool, and I would encourage the council to take into account, because as I said, I agree, we need to leave open who the actual enforcement party would be. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other council comments? I would declare this public hearing adjourned. I would declare this public hearing adjourned.